Committee on Ordinance will now come to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counsel Dion?
Here.
Counsel Kilby?
Here.
Counsel Lee?
Yeah.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizen input. Seeing that we don't have any citizens that want to share their input with us, we'll move on to item number two. Proposed ordinance traffic handicap parking, which was referred on December 14th, 2021, and December 28th, 2021.
Motion to adopt, if appropriate?
Can I get a motion for emergency preamble through all readings?
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Kilby, second by Counsel Dion. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
For the emergency preamble, Counsel Dion?
Yes.
Counsel Kilby?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Repouza?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Made by Counsel Dion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Repouza. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Third item is a proposed ordinance traffic miscellaneous referred to the committee on December 14th, 2021.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
First reading was made by Counsel Kilby, second by Counsel Dion. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Item number four is a resolution to discuss the establishment of an ordinance to require any stipend above $2,000, require city council approval. This was tabled on May 30th, 2019. I would need a...
Motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table was made by Counsel Kilby, second by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Is there any discussion? I will just start off originally with the resolution going back to 2019. There was some concern that there were stipends that were being handed out to employees that were above and beyond their salaries that at the time, city council was not aware of. That being said, obviously, the administration does have the authority to issue stipends as long as there is an appropriation associated with that. I think some of the concerns there were, in particular, there was a snow stipend that was given to the chief of staff that really kind of pushed this resolution forward, especially with the fact that the council felt that the duties that were associated with the snow stipend really did fall within the job description and responsibilities of the chief of staff at the time. So I think it was really trying to create an ordinance that would give us at least some type of oversight or safety net with regards to the approval of stipends moving forward. So the resolution was for the amount of $2,000 would be required by the city council. There was a memo, I'm sorry, I gave... There was a memo that was drafted by then Corporation Council Judge Macy, and I won't read the entire memo, but because it goes into contract employees, union employees, ordinance employees, and obviously stipends that are collectively bargained are allowable, and that really is through the administration. But with respect to employees and ordinance, and those not falling under individual contracts or collective bargain agreements that would stipulate stipends, it did say, "With respect to stipends so-called, there is no definition of the term either in the charter or ordinance. However, if the stipend is a payment to an employee to increase their salary for the same task as contained in their job description, it is considered salaries and wages regardless of what it is called and needs to be addressed by ordinance. Payment for a task or tasks outside of the regular job description may be given additional compensation without an ordinance change as a matter of executive action."
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. Payment for the task or tasks outside of the regular job description may be given additional compensation without an ordinance change as a matter of executive action, so long as the amount is within the budget appropriation. So one, I'm just really looking to clean this item up, really kind of get some, I guess, direction from this committee on if we want to move forward with having an ordinance drafted that would require any stipend above the amount of $2,000, come back down to the council for approval regardless of funding. Counsel Dion had her hand up first, so Counsel Dion?
Yeah, I think my only comment would be precedent was set, and because precedent was set, moving forward, you don't know what will or won't happen. I think it's reasonable to set a limit, so I think we should pursue it. That's basically my only comment. That I yield.
Counsel Kilby?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I totally understand the intent of the resolution, and I agree with it. However, thank you, Council Chairman Kadim, for reading Counsel Macy's comments. The intent, I think, is right there. However, according to Macy's opinion, he doesn't really think it's necessary. Those are bad times that we went through, and I would just hope that if any future stipends came down from that category of employees that you just spoke about, then we would be getting given written notice of that fact. So my opinion would be to give this leave withdraw, but to send a letter to the administration that any future stipends that are within that category of employees, the city council receive written notice of the same. So I yield.
Counsel Lee?
So I think the crux of this, the purpose of this and the crux of this is based off of a conflict of interest, right? This was meant to try to address a mayor being in a position to sort of use a stipend system to break the conflict of interest. So I think, was there any language about that, about if a stipend was used to sort of give a favor to someone rather than the actual job description?
No, I don't think there was any real discussion about it. I think it was just overall, I think folks were a little concerned about the circumventing of salaries that were established in ordinance, right? So there was a lot of that coming down, and I think some of it is just administratively, you know, the mechanics requires that the administration bring back updates, obviously, for the pay scales that are in ordinance. So you would have increases or cost of living adjustments that were made that would put people outside of what was in ordinance, so obviously, there's a conflict there. Trying to, obviously, for those that may be below it, but looking to get some additional monies without having to come down to the council, you could potentially go about it by implementing a stipend. So I think that's where some of the mindset was at the time of that. And obviously, again, I think being straightforward is a $10,000 snow stipend for a chief of staff that wasn't performing snow duties, right?
Right, and I think, I mean, I remember, I remember seeing that, and you specifically asking over and over again, like, what were the duties that this person was doing that was different from what they normally did? And the fact that there was not even a lot of snow that day, you know, for it to be a $10,000 stipend was just, you know, a lot. So I don't know, I don't think we should be necessarily ignoring the opportunity for something like this to happen again. I don't know if maybe this is the venue or the avenue to address it, but I do think that if we had a situation like that, there should be something, some kind of teeth to something that we can do to address that situation like that. So maybe the language in this specific resolution doesn't fully address that situation, but I think we need to at least maybe explore the opportunity to find a way to address something if it comes down the line again, because that was egregious. I don't think anyone could deny that, and I think we need to figure out a way to address those things. Now, I was thinking through conflict of interest, just of simple fact of this person received $10,000 for something that clearly, in most people's opinions, it wasn't valid, you know? But how do we address that? I think the council who wrote this resolution obviously was making an honest attempt at that. Maybe we just need to figure out an avenue that actually does directly address that kind of issue.
Yep.
That I yield, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, I think, again, that the stipend discussion is for those that are outside of an individual contract, which would obviously highlight any stipends that that individual will be getting, or the collective bargain agreements that are in place that would also highlight the different stipends that are provided to the employees. Before I recognize Counsel Dion, Counsel Repouza, you haven't spoken yet. So typically, what we, just everybody's got to speak once before I go move on to the second person, so that's the only reason I ask, so you're good. Counsel Dion?
Thank you. Yeah, it just kind of sparked my memory. I also think, I wasn't on the council at the time, but I feel like I recall that stipends were, to a certain extent, also being used to circumvent the fact that the city council would not vote to increase people's salaries, if I remember correctly. So granted, in the budget, whatever the administration has in a line item, they're allowed to spend at their discretion. However, I think they were being used indiscriminately and simply because they were trying to circumvent. So I think also this conversation might have some purpose in negating that or putting that more on an even field, that that can't be done. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Can I just ask the city administrator to come down, just a couple of basic questions, and you may not have the answers. I know you're fairly new to the position, but...
You have one right there, right?
Is this your first official meeting?
It is.
Nice, nice.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here.
How can I help?
So I guess the first question would be, just so we can get an understanding, and again, you may not have this answered, but do you know roughly how many individuals or employees are receiving stipends that would fall outside of the collective bargaining agreement or individual contracts?
I do. So I had Jen Argo do a little survey of stipends. She's obviously here tonight, too, and can answer some questions the council would like regarding how many stipends are being paid. Now, this does not include police and fire. Those would be within collective bargaining agreements that are relevant to those particular bargaining units. So with regard to stipends that are here, some of them are even, again, within either ASME or Teamsters. But what I can see is that there are three stipends within the clerks' and city council office, and so I would suggest that those are well within the knowledge and understanding of the council, and really have to do with being here at meetings. Aside from that, there is a head custodian stipend that falls outside of the $2,000 threshold, and at this time, I do not know whether it is part of his collective bargaining agreement. I am aware that that particular union is really comprised of two persons, and so that's the law unit, and so not the law department, the law unit. And as head custodian, he does have a stipend for being on call.
Yeah, I believe that's rolled into the collective bargaining agreement.
So, and I just, I didn't have a chance to take a look at that agreement. Aside from that, I see a junior civil engineer on-call stipend that would not be rolled into a collective bargaining agreement. I don't believe that that position is actually filled at this time, but my understanding, having discussed it earlier today, is that if we were to fill that position, similar to what happened in 2018 with a number of positions, stipends that were being paid, really sort of muddying waters with regard to how people were really being paid, it would get rolled into the junior civil engineer salary. We just haven't had a chance to fill that position, and we may or may not fill that position in the near future. And then finally, there are two employees within solid waste that do get a snow stipend. There has been ongoing discussion about the fact that with regard to snow services, there are essentially three sort of categories of employees. There are certain employees that would be entitled to overtime as part of their services for snow. There are other employees that are on salary and wouldn't be entitled to overtime because of their status as exempt employees, and so they would essentially be paid on an hourly basis, similar to civilian contractors and end-of-year civilian contractors. The sort of fourth, slightly more nebulous group, would be the ones that have these stipends, that as far as I can tell, are rolled into their collective bargaining as Teamsters or as ASME employees. So there are very, very few that really would come under what's described in this particular resolution. In fact, I can only see maybe four or five total in the city that do and would continue in the future to fall under what's being described in this particular resolution.
Okay. But that doesn't present, I guess, I'm sorry, does not prevent the administration from creating additional stipends if it so chose to, right?
That's true.
So I think we just got to keep that in the back of our minds as well, just, you know, obviously, this is, you know, while the times are going well now, it's really trying to plan for, you know, the worst-case situation, to make sure that we've got safety nets in place, to make sure that things don't transpire like they did in the past. Do you have, have you given any consideration or thought to the $2,000 amount? Is that unreasonable? Because I think I would want to allow some flexibility for the administration to be able to obviously conduct the day-to-day, but also try to strike a balance with regard to a dollar amount, so that, you know, we can, again, the city council can feel comfortable and, you know, report back to the constituents that we're confident enough that there are safety measures in place, right? So is 2,000 a good number, or is it kind of low? What's your take, if you've given it any consideration?
So I thought about it a little bit, and I would connect my thoughts on this to the question of why would a stipend be paid in the first place? I can only come up with really two reasons. And this is going along with Judge Macy's thought that it doesn't really matter what you call it, if it's outside of the salary or whatever the, you know...
Job description.
Job description, the predetermined pay structure of somebody. If it's payment outside of that, whatever it's called, stipend, allowance, whatever, it's this thing we're talking about. And those two instances where I would imagine that a stipend might be paid are either someone's being asked to do something outside of their job description, that's the obvious one, or a person is incurring certain personal costs associated with their job that maybe the city would try to offset. So a good example is I know that some of the inspectors and some of the other folks that use personal vehicles to carry out their work have in the past received certain allowances or stipends, if you will, which I would argue legally is not truly a stipend, it's more of an allowance that is part of the job description, but it is outside of the traditional either hourly or salary paycheck. So using those two instances where something, some additional stipend might be paid, the question is, is $2,000 the appropriate amount? And I would argue that it might be low. Again, I don't have any particular situation in mind where I would imagine that somebody would be paid more than $2,000, but just looking at some of the stipends that have been paid here, none of them seem surprising or outrageous. Some of them are certainly over $2,000, and I could certainly see that if we take, you know, the amount of somebody's time spent doing things outside of their work, you know, if you're imagining that they might spend a few hours a week doing this thing, and giving them, you know, some sort of workable wage attached to those few hours per week, I would imagine it might add up to more than $2,000. Because if you divide that out, that's either a fairly small amount of time or a small hourly rate for the time. So if the council is inclined to think about something higher than that, maybe $3,000 or $4,000 is a more appropriate mark.
Counsel Lee?
And again, I know that we're talking about $2,000, $10,000, whatever it is, but again, and this is just about the situation that inspired the resolution in the first places. If a mayor wanted to circumvent this, say, we come to a conclusion that it's $2,000, now they do a stipend for, they do five or six stipends for $1,000 apiece, just to get that money to where it needs to go, for whatever reason, what, that's, you know what I'm saying? Like, where are we, how would we be able to address something like that? I think that's really what we're trying to really get to the bottom of.
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that at that point, somebody doing that is just more in your face of trying to circumvent, because as it currently stands, there's no ordinance that's silent on stipends, right? So I think when we go back to the same point that I brought up about the $10,000 snow stipend, everybody was aware that there was snow stipends, but who was getting it? So, you know, once we started digging through and found out that there were individuals that potentially should not have gotten it, we come to the fact that now we've got to create at least something in ordinance, because number one, there's no definition, and it's silent, right? So once we put that in there, and we, well, I guess, this committee and the city council agrees to as having a safety net in place, then it just becomes more egregious, you know, from an administrative standpoint, if that's what you're going to be doing, if you're going to constantly be handing out, you know, five different $2,000 stipends or $3,000 stipends to individuals. And I think at that point, the city council would have more, I guess, more issue or heartache with regard to this going on, and I think hopefully, at that point, we have the ability to hold the administration accountable through various measures, whether it's finance committee or other departments to really deal with it. But, you know, I think one of the things is that we can't over, you don't want to, you know, death by a thousand, payback cuts, right? You want to try to create ordinances that are clear, defined, but we can't really try to micromanage and anticipate every single item, because I think if somebody wants to abuse a policy or an ordinance, they're going to find a way to do it. It's just got to make sure that, you know, the average person, looking at it from a reasonable lens, would say that there is a mechanism in place that would help to eliminate the abuse of this. And I think maybe two...
That is shiny.
Right. You know, whether it's, whatever the dollar amount is, I think that does that. But again, to me, I just want to be able to strike the balance with the administration, because I think it's important for an administration, whether it's this one or future administrations, to be able to have flexibility, because at the end of the day, things do come up, you have situations where, you know, you might not be able, especially now, in the job setting that we're seeing, it's very hard and difficult to, you know, fill some of these positions that are open and vacant, you know? You've CFOs, you've got clerks are being, you know, I'm going out for the third time on a clerical staff, you know, in CCONC, so it's just, it's repeating, and there's not a whole lot of candidates right now coming in. So if you want to pay somebody to pick up the extra duties, and you want to be able to give them a stipend, you want to have that flexibility without having to come back down to the council and, you know, dragging that on, so.
Yep, I yield, by the way. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Kilby?
I'm getting a clear message. I think my colleagues want to keep this here where it is, and it would have been nice to get a draft ordinance before us tonight to at least consider and tweak instead of prolonging this. I mean, this resolution was passed in July 12, 2018. So item number four, I'm looking at the resolution, when I was looking at the agenda this morning, I flipped the page and I said, "I'd like to see a proposed ordinance," and we could do this from the floor. We could change it, tweak it, suggest something we can send to the council, because what's going to happen is this is going to be put off to another meeting. Counsel Lee brought up some very good points in terms of what he would like to see. So it looks like this is going to be tabled again, and I'll support that. And I think the council gave a message in terms of, maybe the number's a little low, and so I don't want to go on and on here, but again, it would have been nice to get proposed ordinance after all this time has gone by, in my opinion, so. That I yield.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I think it was just tabled, and then no action was taken by the ordinance committee at the time, so.
But tonight's on the agenda, tonight's not difficult, I'm sorry.
No, no, but I think I prefer to have, as opposed to us trying to draft an ordinance, just to work with the administration and see if they can draft some language for us to review, but again, I think it would have been a little bit premature to assume that the committee wanted to move in that direction, that's all, so. But I agree with you. I think if we can have something, it's just more detail that we can actually say, okay, this works, this doesn't work, but... So if the intent of the committee, just to move this conversation forward, is to go ahead and prolong that, I would just ask for a motion to have the administration work and draft on a...
Motion made.
Okay, so motion to have the administration draft an ordinance on the stipends and have that presented to the ordinance committee, and we'll table this item. So we'll take that motion first. Motion was made by Counsel Lee, second by Counsel Repouza. Discussion? Counsel Dion?
Yeah, I just have one question. Counsel Lee brought up the fact of that, you know, one person could get X number of stipends. If we agree on a dollar amount that you feel is fair, that everybody feels is fair, would it be sensible or prudent to say the stipend would be not so much per dollar amount per stipend, but per person? So in other words, you have somebody that's working in a specific area, and they do extra duty, you feel they deserve $1,000 for the work they did as a stipend. Down the road, they might do more, that you might feel they deserve another $1,000. So there would be a cap on the individual to meet the number that's determined is fair? Am I...
You are. So that's clear. I can't speak to the mayor, because we haven't really discussed in depth what this might look like, but at your pleasure, I can certainly, at whatever date you identify, I can bring back a draft with the administration's input as to what that might look like. It could certainly have a cap on the aggregate. It could indicate that, you know, stipends to the same person cannot be given contemporaneously. So there's a number of different ways to do that.
And not to say that I'm saying that, I mean, say the dollar figure was 5,000, it doesn't matter what the dollar number is, not to say that it can't be given all at once, you know, not to say it has to be doled out, but just in the event, should there be a limit per aggregate? That's the question.
Certainly, and at the very least, I'm sorry, Counsel Dion, at the very least, whatever the administration asks me to bring back before the council, it'll give you something to work with, because it's turning Kilby's, Counsel Kilby's comment is well-taken, that it would certainly be much easier to have a draft to work with as opposed to just talking about this in the abstract, so I can consult with the administration and do that.
Okay, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Repouza?
And I'm just thinking about some level of consistency when you talk about those stipends, you know, if you're doing a certain job and getting a stipend for a set amount, the next time you do that same job, it's relatively close to or the same level of stipend you're going to be receiving versus one time being a thousand, next time being a 2,000, when you're really doing the same role. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion on the motion? So the motion, just to be clear, that we're voting on is to refer this to the administration for a draft ordinance to come back before ordinance committee. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Sorry, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table made by Counsel Repouza, second by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Item number five, Committee on Ordinance and Legislation discussed the establishment of an ordinance requiring all collective bargaining agreements include cost analysis. This was adopted on March 5th, 2019. I was the council that actually sponsored this resolution, so the intent behind this was originally, the council was receiving collective bargaining agreements that were coming down before the city council without any cost associated with it, so year one cost, year two cost, and then total cost for contract. So part of my concern was is that once the city council approves a collective bargaining agreement for the first year, essentially, that's what we're doing for the first year and funding associated with that, the city is now obligated for the entire collective bargaining agreement. So from my standpoint as a council, without getting that type of information for the total cost of the CBAs, it was hard for us to be able to really, truly take an educated vote as to whether or not we wanted to approve this, and then, again, committing long-term, you know, obviously, financial liabilities based on the agreements that were put in place by the agreements and the negotiations that were taking place. And I fully recognize that we're not here to negotiate the collective bargaining agreement, however, as a legislative body, we provide appropriation for it, so I think that's an important factor into this. I will say that I... I will say that I really will live it up to the, to this committee as to whether or not we want to really truly draft an ordinance that would state that. I would tell you that the obvious, and I guess the most reasonable presentation of any collective bargaining agreement would include costs associated with it for the total contract and year-over-year breakdowns. And we started to see that a little bit after this resolution came in, so I'm comfortable with what's been presented thus far. But, so we can either take this as an item just to clean up and do a leave-to-with drawer, or if, if the committee feels strongly that we want to try to get a draft ordinance in place, we can do that. Council Kilby had his hand up.
Again, I, I think it's a wonderful resolution. It speaks to accountability. It speaks to communication. The only, first question I had obviously is, we, we cannot intervene with collective bargaining. So this would be after the agreements are settled, then we would get an analysis before we vote in terms of the financial impact. So that begs another question in my mind in terms of, and I should know the answer to this question. But we approve collective bargaining agreements?
We do.
Okay, I remember on the, he is on the school committee, we'd ratify contract, motion to ratify, motion to ratify, motion to ratify.
So that's, the school committee has the authority to, to ratify. On the town, on the city side, the legislative body needs to appropriate and ratify.
So we, we actually get a copy, again, I've been around a while, but I should know the answer to this question. So we, I don't remember ever getting the actual contract, the union contracts in front of me and voting on the contract. So we vote on the overall appropriation during budget time.
So they, they, so it's, it's twofold. So originally, they weren't sending us the contracts. Then council started asking for a copy of the contract. So what they were doing was just sending the contract with no red line changes, so there wasn't. I prefer to see an MOU, right? So the MOU will really tell you exactly what the change is from one contract to the next contract. So that really gives you the highlight, so you'll be able to see that. So from my standpoint, I would present the MOU or the MOA, depending on how they want to phrase it, along with each funding for each year. Both, they, they were sending the contracts down, but no red line change. So it was hard to really, unless you had a copy of, of the prior expiring contract, you wouldn't be able to do the analysis, so you'd have to go line by line.
Okay. So I, I guess, and I should, again, I'm repeating, I should know this. It's the purview of the mayor and, and Council Chairman, he used to speak about this quite often, with regard to staying in our lane. Our job is our job, the mayor's job is executive, is his or her job. So I, I think you know my, my, my question is whether, whether or not we have the authority to, obviously we have the authority to get information. But do we, we approve these contracts?
Yeah, so we, we approve the, we, we ratif-
Budget process.
We ratify the contract and we provide appropriation the first year. My concern becomes, once we do that, we are obligated to fund year two and year three or, and sometimes on all contracts are three-year contracts, but depending on the terms, right? So they don't typically exceed three years. So once you do that, so let's just say year one is only a $10,000 increase. But year two has a $500,000 increase and we can't afford it. We're now obligated, it doesn't come back to the city council, we're obligated to fund that. So the administration will have to go in and, and fund that. So if we don't have the funding, that just means that you're going to have layoffs and, but you're still going to have to, you know, live up to all the agreements that were in place. So if you agreed to a cost of living adjustment of 5%, you still have to pay 5%. But it may not be on 100 employees, it may only be on 50 employees because you have to lay off 50 employees to be able to cover the cost. So that's, that's where the concern comes from a legislative body to make sure that, from a fiduciary responsibility, we know what the true cost is going out to the, to the term of the contract. And we're comfortable with making sure that we're going to be able to fund it. So to your, to your point, though, we're not getting into the weeds of saying, no, we don't like the fact that you gave a stipend. It's either you, you approve the entire contract, you don't get to, to pick and choose and, and say, okay, we're going to remove this language or that language, so.
So I'm, I'm sorry if I monopolized it too much time here. So a- after the police, the fire, all the other unions are at the bargaining table. And after a number, number of months or, oh, maybe a number of weeks, the, the team, both teams settle a contract. Do we have the ability to say, no, go back to the bargaining table? I don't think we do.
You do, you only, you do if you don't approve the appropriation. So, so they've got to get, the union has to get it ratified. So if the union doesn't get it ratified, then they have to go back to the administration and it really kind of starts negotiations all over. So it will never get to us. And then when it comes to us, if we don't vote for the appropriation, essentially the administration will go back. And I would hope that the council would say why they're not doing it. So if it's because they're concerned about, you know, the dollar amount, they've got to reduce, which, and I'll throw out arbitrary number, $100,000, that would be on the administration to figure out how they do that.
I love the spirit of the resolution, like I said before, if I'm using that word, I, I do. And I just don't want to cross lanes too much with our rule and, and the administration's rule. But the sharing of information is, I think, very, very, very important. We can move to a different type of form of government if we'd like, but we have what we have right now. That's all I'll say on this matter. I'll listen to my colleagues.
No, I just had some questions.
Council Lee.
Yeah, I just had some questions because again, this was, this was passed in March and, and I just, I just wanted to know, cost, cost analysis on the CBA. So is, is there, is there a precedent, is there a template that we, is there other area, you know, other town or other area that actually has approved or disapproved of CBAs with, or without a cost analysis? Is that something, is, are we asking for something that is unprecedented? Or is that something that is common in most CBA presentations to city councils?
I can't speak for other communities, but I know like when you get to towns, town meetings have to approve. So I, I think they have to approve the ratification of a, of a contract. So it really is up to that, I guess, executive branch on how much information they provide. But, you know, constituents can get up and ask, ask questions. So I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable. I, I would, I would tell you that we're not asking, I, I would hope that we're not asking for any information that hasn't already been done, right? So if you're going to agree to, let's just call it a 2.5% increase for cost of living adjustment, you would want to know what that cost would be, right? So you would have a dollar amount saying, okay, that's going to cost us $500,000, okay? If you've increased the, a stipend from $1,000 to $2,000, you know, you have so many employees, that's going to cost us, you know, $10,000. If you've given another holiday, that's going to have a, a dollar, dollar amount attached to it. So I would think before any type of agreement is in place, I would think that the administration is already doing that. Because even the removal of language is going to cost money. The adding of language costs you money. So you want to be able to go in there with some type of, you know, if, and I'm not trying to give strategy, strategy plans out for, for the union, but typically you'll go in and say, okay, we've got $100,000. Now how we divvy up the pie, whether it's through cost of living adjustments or stipends or other type of adjustments, we have $100,000 to play with. So I would think that those analysis are being done.
And, and I, and I'm in agreement with the, with it. I just was curious if there was any kind of precedent sent somewhere in, in a, in a different area. Because then we would have some kind of foundation to build off of. You know, I think the administration, whatever, whoever it is at the time, when you're, when they're presenting to the, when they're, when they're done with all the unions and everything and they are presenting to the city council, that there is some sort of template in place that we can at least follow to find it. But it seems like we're going to be building this from scratch, which is great. I, I have no problem with that. I was just asking out of curiosity if, if you, you having experience where you are in, in two different areas, if that's how it's presented to your town council or, or anything like that. But it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter. I think we have a responsibility regardless of anything. If we're going to approve something, whether it be a budget or a CBA, how much is it going to cost the taxpayers year to year? I think we need to know that information, period. So I'm in 100% support. My question was more out of, is this being done in other areas? So that way maybe we can find that foundation to build on. But I think this is great that we're doing it right from the ground up. This is, this is something we need. So I, I was, I'm, I'm not in disagreement at all. I'm actually in full support of it, so I, I yield on that. Thank you.
Council Dion, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, I think we've already been through this with the last police and fire contract. The language was changed in the contracts to bring people from other divisions into the fire department. They would come in at a higher, at a higher level, which gave them in essence more seniority than others. We had a question about that. We had a question about how it monetarily affected it, how, if it affected seniority down the road. And we ultimately tabled it. We sent it to KP Lord again, the opinion on how it either adversely or didn't adversely affect the money, et cetera. So I think we basically already did this. And that was just an, an example of how, how it does take place and what our responsibilities were. With that, I yield.
Any other discussion? Seeing none.
I'll make the motion to have a draft ordinance.
Okay. Motion to refer this to the administration for a draft ordinance was made by Council Lee.
Second.
Seconded by Council Dion. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Uh, motion, thank you. Motion to table. Motion to table was made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Dion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Item number six is a communication regarding a proposed amendment for expense and travel policy. This was referred to the committee on December 16th, 2019. We do have a letter in here from then-acting Mayor Cliff Ponte with regard to making some, some changes to the ordinance. So, Council Kilby?
Yes, thank you. I review this. It's, it's nice to have a draft ordinance. So I, I think it totally makes sense. And I'm going to ask my colleague to support a motion to send this to the full council with a positive recommendation to adopt this ordinance.
I think he was looking to, there's a couple of things, right? I think there's an ordinance in place already and I think he was looking to strike city council. So could I, could I just ask that we have-
There's a new draft ordinance here.
That's a poli, I think that's a policy. I think that's an administrative policy. Right, so that wouldn't be... So I think we have a couple of things. I think they were looking to do an internal policy on just reimbursements and expenditures, which really is outside the jurisdiction of the city council. But I think- And then I think he was looking to strike city council from the ordinance 2-384. So I would, I would just ask that we just refer this to the administration as well. I, I don't know that this policy has been implemented. So before we go and change the ordinance, I would just ask the administration if they could just review what the expenditure and reimbursement policies are and then make recommendations on amendments to the ordinance 2-384 or any other additional ordinance that they feel would be applicable.
I would make them a motion to refer it to the administration.
A motion was made by Council Dion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council, uh, seconded by Council Reposo, Council Kilby?
Want to follow a comment? I would, I would probably urge the administration to cooperate with the school department because there's a lot more, there's much more conferences and travel and different things. And there's a solid policy in place, so I think it would probably make sense to cooperate, I mean, cooperate, communicate with them.
I yield, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion was made by Council Dion, seconded by Council Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Item number seven, develop a strategy to allow continuous operations of the city council through telecommunications or other forms of technology during times of an emergency. This was tabled on February 4th, 2021. Could I just get a-
Make a motion to lift it from the table?
Motion to lift from the table was made by Council Dion, seconded by Council Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. I think this is really a housekeeping matter. We've been going through Zoom, so I, I think there really is no need for this one. Is there a motion to grant leave to withdraw? Motion was made by Council Kilby, second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Dion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Item number eight is a proposed ordinance. Director of Human Resources was referred to the committee on December 14th, 2021. So here, there's a request from Mayor Coogan. He's respectfully asking for the removal of section 5.73, requiring the approval of city council of the director of human resource contract each time it's renewed. So I believe, and I'll let the administrator correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're looking for the approval of the appointment. I was drawing a blank on the, the word, the, the appointment and not the renewal of a contract. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Discussion?
Yeah, I believe this is one of the only positions that that's done with. The others all fall into the, the category and the execution that you're looking for in regard to this position. So I, I, if any, I don't know if anybody else has any comment, but I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve was made by Council Dion, is there a second? Seconded by Council Kilby, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is a proposed ordinance. Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees, the director of Cemeteries and Trees, referred to committee on December 14th, 2021. So we're looking to adjust the commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees of cemetery, I'm sorry. Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees, Director of Cemetery Trees, is that, is that accurate? With a not to exceed salary of $75,000. And then also the removal of the Commissioner of Recreational Facilities and Cemeteries Administrator, Administrator of Recreational Facilities, Cemeteries and Trees in section 50-301. Salary schedules for executive officers, department heads and non-personnel, non-union personnel. Council Kilby?
So totally in the stand, obviously was, the other alternative would be to not adopt this and save money. Is it a, so if we adopt this, it's a non-cost stipend for the budget, right?
No, I believe it's going from, I think that what they're looking to do is to increase it from 66,439.
To 75, eliminating-
All the other.
The other position.
Right.
So if this, and I'm not saying I'm, you know, I'm going to vote here, but this individual, I think he's doing a very good job. You know, I, he's doing a lot of driving around, so it's nothing against him. I'll probably end up supporting it, but just being a tough advocate, asking a question. If this individual stood where he was, we would have a savings on the other side. So is it, is it somewhat of a reward for good work, taking on new responsibilities?
So if I may, may I answer that question? So we're really looking to just raise the cap on the position and not affect a raise here. I don't think there's been any conversation in the administration as to where this person's salary should go or if it even should be raised. And I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying that-
But tactically, that's probably not.
That could happen. And I would say that, that as a division head, this particular person, not that this applies only to that, to, to the person who's in the position right now, it's any way they want to report. But I think the idea is that with a cap of 66,439, even though the person in the position is being paid significantly less than, than that, I believe he's at $58,000 right now, a cap of 75 allows us to, you know, going forward, attract the very best candidates for these positions. I think this is an issue that we have sort of across the board in a lot of positions in the city is that there are people that just are not willing to come here because the salaries are, are lower. Now, the reality is that, you know, this is not a city with a ton of money. And, you know, we, we have amazing people that are doing incredible work here in City Hall and around across the city. And I think we want to just make sure that now and in the future, we can attract the very best people we can to continue doing that work.
I, I know Mr. Eaton, who had this position prior, and he, he did a fine job as well. He handled trees as well. He, but I think he was a little over 60 and that was a quarter while ago. So I, I understand the, so, okay, I just asked my questions. I'll, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion to-
So just before we take the motion, can I just get a clarification on the actual job title? So Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees and then Director of Cemeteries, Trees, is that-
So, so I believe it's Director of Cemeteries and Trees. So, so, I believe it's Director of Cemeteries and Trees, and I think that the reference to the Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees is to make sure that whether it's in the ordinance right now or any sort of historical reference...
Yeah, so whether it's a Commissioner or a Director, it's covering the same?
It's the same thing.
Okay. All right, what was the motion?
Would it be a motion to refer full council to positive recommend...
So, yeah, motion to adopt the request for a salary change not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars with the title change to reflect as presented, which would be Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees and Director of Cemeteries and Trees, was, was made by Council Kilby, is there a second? Seeing no second. Is there a motion?
Motion leave-to-withdraw?
Second.
Motion to leave, uh, grant leave-to-withdraw was made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Lee, there's no discussion on a grant leave-to-withdraw. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
On the motion to give the proposed ordinance leave-to-withdraw, Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Kilby?
Yes.
Council Lee?
Yes.
Council Reposo?
Yes.
Check it out.
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number ten is a proposed ordinance, Deputy Police Chief. The mayor is asking that we remove the deputy police twenty-year position and the deputy police twenty-five-year position, and the deputy police twenty-eight-year position from section fifty-dash-three-oh-one, salary schedules for executive officers, department heads and non-union personnel, and adding the deputy police position per contract in section fifty-thirty, uh, I'm sorry, fifty-dash-three-oh-two, salary schedule for contract personnel, so essentially making this a, a contract position. Council Lee?
Well, I, I actually appreciate this, it's an attempt to make things more efficient, I think it's a good move overall. I only have one question, the, once the contract is agreed upon, is it something that the city council approves as well?
Uh, no, I think this one would be just, is, would this be considered an appointment as well, or would that...
I don't believe it requires a city council.
The appointment or the...
The appointment or the...
Okay.
Well, again, I'm still gonna support this, I think it's a good move. Money-wise, I also think it's a good move organization-wise, so, without a yield, thank you.
Any further discussion, motions?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve was made by Council Dion, seconded by Council Lee, discussion?